Sorry for starting a little late. Appreciate your guys' patience. Number one on the work session agenda is discussion of old substation at Young Street and Nickel Street. Please, come on.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for listening to this idea. I bought the property next door to that. It was the whole hog barbecue. And as I spent time in that neighborhood, I began learning how important that property was in the Heritage of Fairhope. There was an issue earlier on about the survey. That's all been worked out. There's no issue about that anymore. But I do know that the substation is going to be retired. It has been retired. They're moving away transformers out of today. I saw them taking them out of there. And as a person who thinks artistically, I thought it might be a good idea to do something important at that site. Make that into maybe a small public park. That had been talked about in the years past with the previous owner. And so, the idea is fairly simple. Take out the transformers, leave a portion of the vertical steel framework that's there, and do something interesting with it. And I've got a diagram here for you. Pictures are better than a thousand words.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. How are you doing today? Appreciate it.
So, the idea is to take part of the vertical structure, not all of it, but a part of the vertical structure, and build a simple pavilion from that. And the diagram at the top is a rendition of a potential sculpture provided by Farough artist Bruce Larson. He and I have worked together over the years on art projects. And he submitted a drawing similar to this for a competition to build a sculpture in Selma, to honor the Selma to Montgomery Mark. And so, this would be somehow placed on top of this structure, on the side, some other way, some way to feature that. And so, as I was trying to figure out how to suggest this idea to you, I got online to try to figure out how, had anybody else done this before? Well, the only people who've ever done anything like this is the city of Seattle. And here's the website. It's a diagram of how this has worked for them. I thought it'd be pretty cool for our little city of Seattle to be a hooded by the same category as the city of Seattle. So, let me tell you a little bit more about it. The idea is to adorn this structure with important art that it fits this part of Fairhope. It's historically black part of Fairhope, black African-American part of town. We would like to seek input from local residents about use and function of the building as pavilion. We would want to make it beautiful with classic Fairhope landscaping. We have the technology and the skills to make that corner of town beautiful. There's businesses across the street that would probably enjoy having some extra parking. I think it's important to recognize the history of that lot. It was a park, it was a park, the park that the city owns. It was a part of the original Parker Young tract of 1895. It was bought with Nancy Lewis when the Farough Single Tax Company bought the lots that they were living on here in town. And later, 40 acres was bought, and then half of that was given to Parker Young, which is where that substation sits, not given to, was purchased by Parker Young. Please note that the building next door, which was the whole hog barbecue, has been approved for Balm County Historic Commission designation. The idea of this drawing was to feature a silhouette Martin Luther King was leading citizens to the churches in that area of town. It's also been talked about as a potential starting port for the MLK parade. It starts at Young and Morphe, anyway. And I think we should take some time to build it. I reached out to the mayor, and she, I think, said, "Let's don't destroy the structure at this time. Let's take some time to think about it. It's not going to hurt anything to gather more ideas, gather more community input." I'm willing personally to contribute to the cost of this through materials and work. And I think we can probably find engineers, architects, and others who will help design this to make it safe. The only safety issue that I can think of personally would be that you don't want people to climb to the top of it. And that's fairly easy to prevent if you do it. I've seen, of course, the Alabama Power Company can do it very easily. So, any questions?
Counsel?
So, I like the concept. I like the idea. Is this, you said, a park, though? Are we going to, just the structure, or will we create it for public access? Is that what the vision is? Just clarification.
That's what I suggest. Now, there's, Mr. Burrell had suggested before retaining a portion of that in case there was some infrastructure aspects like fiber. Now, I would suggest maybe put that to the, let's see, the east side of that. The lot is fairly long, so if you, there's like three or three, three vertical rows of that tower. You just use the front two and leave the back part unused and...
As an easement of some sort for utilities.
If you need, you know, put a pretty, pretty brick structure in there or something like that, it would not affect it for the long haul.
Very good.
But it'd be something positive for that part of the town that's changing rapidly. And I think the community would be grateful for, for my conversations.
Yeah, I think it's great to kind of uplift that area, in my opinion. It needs some uplifting. Many years now. So, another question, if I may, Council Chair. This image here, the silhouette, would that be a part of it as well?
That is, that is part of the plan. Now, what's interesting is, you know, that can be changed to be inclusive, historic, any way, any way a community could decide to do it. But artist Bruce Larson and I thought that MLK leading it, that's the first image, particularly it was his idea to focus on the churches that are up and down Young Street and in that area there. But that would be an appropriate thing. I don't know. So, that's, so that's kind, and I think the historic aspect of this is that this, is that this was designed for, for the Selma to Montgomery Mark honored. He didn't get selected for that sculpture. Someone else did.
But it was the heart of it was there.
Yeah, that's where it came from. That was 2014 when he submitted it. But he lives here with us now, so he's our Fairhope, he's one of our Farough artists. And I would also suggest getting some other artists involved in it as well. There's all kinds of ways to put things underneath it, around it, on the side of it, up, you know, like that. But feature some of the art. I plan to put some, public art in the area in the building next door, so it'd be contiguous to that, so.
So, Dr. Young, let me ask you this. What exactly, I think your idea sounds great. My question to you would be, what exactly are you asking of us as the city to help get this done?
Let's don't tear it down. Let's get, let's keep our mind open to doing it. There's no, I have no idea what something like this would cost. I could probably build it for you for $5,000, but I'd be using recycled material and pressure treated two-by-fours. But we've got a room full of people here that work for the city, the lineman and everything else that could put the cross braces up. You know, we could probably get volunteers to do the majority of it, as long as it meets safety and code type, you know, and things like that. Would ensure that.
Trust me, if I did it, it would not meet any safety and code regulations. I can promise you.
Well, I bet you would. But you know, it's fairly simple because you have this, this, this structure that's standing there that could withstand a bomb attack. You know, I mean, that thing is solid, you know? So, leave, leave the vertical metal, and then let the artists and people who might want to volunteer to do something with it do it. But we would come back to you at every phase of it. You know, at some point, maybe get an idea of what it might cost to do it. Some of the stuff would be donated, the artwork perhaps, and things like that, so I would...
Counsel, if you have any questions?
First, I'd just say, you know, thank you, Dr. Young, for always trying to leave things a little better than, than they were before. I know you're creative, and I'm not as creative, so I am looking at this, and it looks like we're just kind of putting a roof in the middle of that. I'm sure it would look, would look nice, but it's just hard for me to...
Well, I have to apologize. I have to apologize.
I think we could kind of, this is not the final...
Right.
But what I hear here, I think this is the spirit of it. He just wanted to give you some type of visual, and so, that's what I'm hearing.
Well, my only question would be, I know that you were at one time interested in even acquiring the property to do something like this with it. And I know at the time, we were talking about needing to retain it for, I guess, was it for fiber facilities?
Well, Jack was concerned about that.
I know, and I just want to, I would hate to do anything that we would have to come back and undo.
Well, I think that's what we...
Leaving a small section of it.
Yeah, I think that Councilman Burrell had talked about, asked, I think he talked to Dr. Young possibly about leaving a small section of it where you could put...
And that'd be sufficient enough to...
A data hub for fiber. I don't know that that's needed anymore in that area, to be honest. But again, I mean, it's not a large piece of property, so to co- like, locate something like that with, I don't know that you could do that. But I mean, I do think that it would be a nice walkable park for the community. You know, put some grass in, and maybe not vehicular traffic, but, you know, pedestrian and traffic.
I think if the, then if the ask is just to not tear that down and be open-minded...
That's right.
The only question that I have, Jimmy, is, is where are we? I don't know those details, you know? Are we... Yeah.
Started removing the components that you have to remove, you know?
Okay.
But the steel structure, we're not planning on touching until we got direction from the council.
And, and, okay, so we don't have anybody on a contract where they're removed?
We do not.
Okay, got you. Okay, those are my thoughts, and...
So, we're in a good, in a good spot to...
To make that decision.
That's what I'm asking. That's exact, that's what I, that's the key right there, so, yeah.
I'm on board with that.
I mean, I don't, yeah.
Well, Dr. Young, it sounds like you've got some strong support up here, at least as far as waiting, and let's kind of see what the next step looks like.
I might get a better draw for you. I did that this afternoon.
That's right. I'm impressed. I can draw a stick, man. That's for sure. So, but, Dr. Young, if you would, give me a call at some point. I would like to talk to you about this and further, you know, try to be a part and help out. That's right. Very good.
Hey, thank you very much, Dr. Young.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yeah, all right. Yes, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, Jimmy.
That's all right.
I'll share with you.
Very good.
All right. Moving along, next up is discussion of the litter trap grant. Now, these the litter interceptors that I was talking about on the radio this morning?
The litter getter?
Not getter, interceptors.
Litter getter. Litter getter. This is about Winn-Dixie, correct?
No, 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 no.
There's another one.
That's the litter getter. This is, this is grant, potential grant stuff, right?
Correct.
And I do want to, the nice handout you have in your packet, put together by Kim Burmeister. So, if you get bored tonight, you know, it goes to every detail to such sites and things of that nature. Just quick background, as you know, we are a permitted multiple storm sewer system permitted community, MS4. And part of the MS4 is keeping illicit discharges out of our waterways, which includes litter and debris of that nature. And, and as you know, GOMESA has become a very powerful thing in our region to fund projects that we normally would not be able to fund. And this was an opportunity for some 100% GOMESA funding that is managed through the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. And there is a branch of this funding that can only be for certain things, such as litter abatement. And I know Kim and the folks planning zoning work very hard in conjunction with the Environmental Advisory Board about, you know, looking at opportunities. A local company, a while back in our region, especially for City Mobile, kind of invented the interceptors. And they do take different forms and shapes. But as you know, when you drive down a curbed and gutter street, you will see an inlet. It may be a long inlet that just water flows out of the curb and goes into a mysterious place. Well, that goes into a drainage system. And that inlet feeds into usually a square box that drops down and hooks up to a pipe. These interceptors, most of them are literally a, I'll call it a trash rack. It is a rack that is built and installed inside that box. So, water drops through it, and if a 20-ounce bottle is floating in that stream, or a wrapper of some type, the grate captures the wrapper or the debris, and the water goes on to the pipe to the bay. And the biggest thing is that then somebody on a regular basis has to come and open the manhole and collect all the litter out of there because you just can't let it accumulate forever. A few of the proposed ones, for example, if you've ever noticed when you leave town or come into town, at Section Street at the very bottom, before you meet by you, you'll see that there's sometimes standing water on, on, on the east side of the road. That is Big Mouth Gully, and, and there is a big, open-top double box that, that would actually have that interceptor built on top of it. Good news is it won't be sightly because you would have to stop your car, get out on the sidewalk, and look down the hill to be able to see it. So, a few of these are external, but most of them are internal, so when you drove by after they were installed, you would never know that they were there. What this grant will pay for is, and we spent some time with, with Kim, and went kind of throughout the area, and tried to identify sites that we thought would have the highest probability of being a higher litter generating area. And we identified basically seven sites in the central business district, two out at Fairhope Avenue and US 98, Greeno Road, which are, two that are ours. We think that's a pretty area that has an opportunity to generate some litter. And then there's three key ones around the fountain complex at the bay that we, we know we, we struggle with litter down there. A lot of folks just don't pick up and throw, and in that case, that is a very short distance to the bay, meaning when water goes down to, and in those inlets, within seconds, it's going into the bay. So, having interceptors there would, would be a very good value to keeping that out of our watersway. So, this is 100% grant. What this grant will pay for is not only the fabrication and installation of these interceptors in 12 identified locations throughout the city. It then would pay for three years of what we call service maintenance, meaning a third party would come in, maintain them, remove any of the debris, and part of what ADM is wanting to know is a reporting on that debris, basically breaking it down, what is the constituents' items being found? What are people, what litter problems do we have? And if all of a sudden, for example, if it is...
Winn-Dixie plastic bags.
If it's a certain product, you may can trace it to where it's sourced, and maybe address it at the source. So, and, and so, it is our request of you is that this is kind of a, there's no downside to this grant. If the reality of it, at the end of three years, we've got, let's say, a third of these sites really showing a lot of debris catching, well, that means that our staff, after this grant is over, the three years, we're going to have to go out and, and keep them clean. But that's okay. We're already doing that. We have litter patrol every day working. And if we find that a couple of these sites don't catch anything, well, we can remove those items and put them in another location, so they're, they're transportable and can be retrofitted to, to separate locations. In a nutshell, what we're requesting is $168,675 for those 12 sites, plus three years of maintenance. And really, the only responsibility the city has is we'll have to do the normal grant things that we do for compliance, as well as we will take the information we received from the vendor that we competitively bid to services, and Kim will have to send in a quarterly report of how, what we're finding, and what's the result of these 12 sites.
Yeah, Richard, you kind of asked, you answered my, what was going to be my first question, which is, what's, why wouldn't we do this? I mean, I don't think there's any, obviously, you just said there's no downside to it. If we apply and we get it graded 100%, and we get these 12 interceptors and keep trash out of places that trash should not get to.
And the reality, let's say that, that the majority of them turn out to be catching a lot of debris, trash, that may open up the opportunity to go back and apply for additional sites.
Right.
You know, so, and I'm, there's part of me that's kind of hoping we don't catch very much, because that means we're doing a real good job of getting it picked up before it gets into the, into the runoff. But it would, it'd be a good test bed to know how we're doing. And it is a feather in our permitting cap that we are being proactive and demonstrating that proactiveness.
Sure. Counsel, any additional questions for Richard on this?
So, Richard, real quick, it's 100%, the 168K is for what?
That's, that's what we'd be asking for, right?
That's correct.
But it would be 100% of that.
So, we don't, so it's 100% for the 168K?
And to kind of break it down a little bit, the, the estimate for the fabrication install of the 12 sites is $39,075. And then figuring a maintenance cost of $300 per month, per site, for three years, that works out to $43,200 annually, so three times that, add that to the fabrication, and that where you get your 168,675.
Okay, so it's 100%. That's a no-brainer. God bless.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very good. Appreciate it. All right. Moving right along, item number three is discussion of cost of services study for utility department. You couldn't let somebody talk for this for you with your voice?
I'm going to. I'm going to try, and then I'll let Kim jump in. So, we have not had a cost of services study done in five years. Typically, you would do that at three, three years. Of course, we all know that AMEA provides $25,000 in funding to do the electric services cost of study. The total is about 3% more than what we have paid in the past $75,000 to do all three utilities. I wanted to bring it before you tonight, just to ask your opinion on if you think it's something we need to move forward on. I do think we're a little bit behind the eight ball. We did not budget this amount, unfortunately, but we are behind the eight ball. I know a lot of our competitors in the area, a lot of other utilities, I shouldn't say competitors, but the other utilities in the area are doing cost of service studies now, just because cost of doing business has increased so much. So, I do think it would be a good time for us to do it, but wanted to bring this to a work session and get your, your feedback. Kim, did you want to add anything?
Unless, unless you're having, having any other questions about it?
So, if we're thinking $75,000 to do all three utilities, and 25 of that is covered, so it'd be $50,000 of unbudgeted expense? Yeah, I mean, if it's something that we should be doing every three years, and it's been five now, especially with the increase that we've seen in, in, in the cost to do business, I mean, I, seems like it's a good time of any. I mean, I'm sure we can find that $50,000 to make up somewhere else.
It takes, it takes a good, what, 12 months? 12, 18 months, I think, to do this study? So, I mean, we'd be a little behind if we...
Yeah, the, right. The longer we wait, the more behind we're going to be.
Yeah, and it's split between the utilities, so the electric would get reimbursed, you know? On the electric side, you're just looking at gas, water, and sewer to come up with the, split the other 50, so.
I'm, I'm sure those guys can find a little bit of 50 here and there in their departments to make a work.
I think it's a good idea. Yeah. And it just helps us for future, to know where our rates are, to make sure we are covering our costs.
Cory and Jimmy said they'd chip in on that 50 also, if it need, if it's needed, so.
Jay gave me his bank account. Yeah, this is something that we, that, I'm glad that we finally followed through with. This is something that we need to do, for sure.
All right. Moving on, item number four is committee updates. Councilman Martin?
Committee updates. The last committee meeting was, I guess, the REC board. We have something on the agenda tonight for that. It's a pretty big deal, so I'm not going to spoil it, but I think we have, once again, we have six or seven people trying to join the REC board. We have an interview process that'll be coming up soon, I guess, at our next meeting. We haven't had that for March yet, so.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good problem to have. And I know the REC board is probably one of the few committees we have where there is a, you have to have an interview process because there's a waiting list.
Because there's a waiting list. And, and then, we just want to make sure, and I'm going to go ahead, and we don't want people joining the REC board with an agenda. You know, we, you know, we've been, and I'm, I'm, we've, we've had a lot of people, some that, that seems to have an agenda for whatever, this and that, and they're interested in one thing and not the whole body of work. And we want to make sure that we vet these individuals so that, you know, that business can continue to flow in all directions, you know, so.
I know exactly what you're saying.
Yep, yep.
All right. Anything else, Cory?
No, that's all I have, sir.
Councilman Conyers?
I don't have any updates at this time.
I'm going to do a brief update on a, on a committee I'm not on anymore, but I did get the opportunity to go out to Arbor Day on Saturday. The city, Richard Page, the tree committee did, did an awesome job of setting that all up. It was, the weather was perfect, had a big turnout, so congratulations to you guys. You did a great job. All right. And I don't have any of my own committee updates.
Very good.
All right, moving on. Item number five is department head updates. And as per usual, if you've got something on the agenda, go ahead and, we'll talk about it now also. I'll start over here with Kim. Nothing? Chief?
Okay.
Yeah, no, no. Lieutenant Hammer?
We've got one prepared, uh, dented vehicles out front. Y'all need to check it out before the leak.
It's wrapped?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay, awesome.
We all need to check that.
Well, we're going, we're going to get done with this sooner than later, so we're, we're going to have a chance to check it out.
Yeah, yeah.
Chief Ellis?
I don't have an update, but if you have any questions about number 11?
Boat ramp.
The boat slip?
So, I have a question, chief, if I may.
You may.
So, can you kind of give me a little bit more explanation on what we're, we're just trying to get access to the waters with the fire department?
Yes, sir. We currently have a 25-foot Boston Whaler that sits at Station 1. So, when we get a call for a water rescue or to assist something on the water, we respond to the station, hook the boat up, go to Pier Street currently, or wherever we need to go, and launch. And we're hoping that if we have a boat slip that's actually on the water, we can cut some...
Some of that time.
Some time down. We actually had a slip, or permission to have a slip a couple of years ago, and one thing or another, we, we weren't ready for it at that point.
Yeah.
We think we're ready for it now.
Not to get into weeds, chief, are we, is there anything extra that we have to do? Are we in cahoots with the Coast Guard on those calls, or is that all our responsibility? How does that, with the marine...
Typically, for us, there's, honestly, they're few and far between, but for boaters in distress and things like that, they'll call, they'll dispatch us, because a lot of times, we can get there quicker than the Coast Guard can. If it's something bigger, they're definitely coming, Marine Police is coming, things like that. Or, you know, everybody's going to start that way, but if we can get there quicker and tell them it's just something simple, we'll gladly do that.
And Mayor, we do have an available slip.
We have an available slip, yeah. And we're waving the fee on there. And liability purposes, we are covered on all of that, as far as insurance and all of that's with our guys going out there. Okay. All right, I have, that's pretty cool, actually.
Kidding? No, I mean, I think...
Can we take the kids out sometime in the boat? I just, since we got a 25-foot whale...
Not on a rescue, not on a rescue.
Anybody want to go with me? We can just take the boat one of these weekends.
We've actually had a boat for as long as I can remember.
That's pretty cool.
It's just we, several years ago, we acquired the 25-foot whaler that the police department had, and it's, we used to have a short, a smaller vessel, but...
Very good. Thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
Not much for the gas. You don't have anything on the ten items? Business is good.
Okay, it's good. Nothing, nothing...
Yeah, no news.
No news is good news sometimes. Richard?
Richard, you might want to just sit up here and buy it. Unless you just, okay, I got you.
Just a couple of updates.
Just a couple of updates. One, and probably happy, happy news, because I was, I kind of alluded to it earlier, that at an earlier meeting, we did open the bids for the K-1 Center of Bestis Abatement. Apparently, that's the one industry that did not get the message about inflation. We received four qualifying bids, and the low bid, even with a 20% contingency built in, is less than $70,000. So I, I was thinking a quarter of a million would have been a win-win, and so we're excited. And Southern Earth, who is our environmental company that's helping us with this, has worked with the low bidder, Hernandez, and said they do a good job. And we did get the bid certified today, and you'll see them on the agenda in two weeks.
Perfect.
So, for the first time, something met...
Something less than what we were expecting it to be?
Yes.
Richard, is that a D B E or M B, or minority business, by any chance, just?
I, I, I do not know, but I can find out.
Yeah, just, you know, that's good news.
So, yeah, we're excited about that. You're gonna hear this a lot tonight, that, you know, apparently, there's just been some, some money breaking loose on, on grants and things of that nature. As you recall, when, in Councilman Conyers' tenure as council president, y'all passed a...
We blocked a lot of that out, I'm sorry.
Supporting resolution about the, the county establishing a recycling cooperative and, and a, and a MRF system down there. That is moving ahead. A D M has now asked for a call for some, some funding to help support that. And part of our commitment in the resolution is some joint applications. And the county has called upon us to, to participate in what's basically a pass-through grant to help get a piece of equipment for that MRF. And we will do a memorandum of understanding. Basically, what's gonna happen is our name's gonna be on the grant application, it's 100%. And then if we get approved, the county's gonna buy the piece of equipment. And when they get, when they pay for it and get the receipt, they'll send it to us, and we'll send them the money. And all, all is well and good, and we get that much further to being open. I do not know if they're gonna meet their January 1 of 2024 deadline, but they seem to be working hard to get that, and that will be a victory day for us. So the, the mayor will submit the actual paperwork this week, and then we'll have an M O U from Baldwin County Solid Waste explaining how this works. And it's just basically, we're asking for the money. If we get it, they're gonna buy the piece of equipment and pay for it, and then we're gonna give them the money in exchange for that piece of equipment, and we'll get that MRF up and running. So we're excited about that. As far as agenda items, we have number five, which we just discussed, which is the application for the Gomesa grant money through A D M for the litter interceptors at the 12 locations. Number six is just a contractual matter that we need your assistance on. We would like to terminate the contract for the annual fire extinguisher inspection services, and I did put a pretty detailed memo in your packet explaining why we got to that. And it, you know, is, I'll just say this much, you know, sometimes you learn lessons the hard way, and this was one of those lessons that we learned the hard way, but we're, we're better and smarter for it now. Number eight, I know that y'all have all had it discussed with you individually. I know Councilman Boone and I have talked, and he's been out on site. The, the pool building is time for some evaluation, and ultimately, some improvements there. And this is to issue a approval of a contract with Watermark. They have a really pretty quality envelope team, building envelope team, that's gonna really get in there and get us an evaluation of what needs to be addressed, and how to address it, and how to maintain it for the future. And then item number 10, y'all have all dealt with this before. It's time to add sand to Magnolia Beach. But one of the good news is that same bucket of money of Gomesa out there, we are attempting to put together a grant application to hopefully enact. If you recall, Dr. Douglas with Coastal Engineers had a, had a design or a concept that would protect that beach and, and keep the robbing of the sand, and stop the, the loss of sand on a regular basis there. And hopefully, this, this time will be the charm, and we'll be bringing that back to you here sometime in the future. Because we all know what the definition of sanity is, to keep doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. And, you know, just about every spring, we've got to re-nurse that beach. And by the time we get to the next year, it's time to do it again. So. Do you have any questions about any agenda items or anything else?
Yes.
Yes?
If I may, council chair, going back to the maintenance facility, recycling facility?
Yes.
Are we gonna have, I'm, I'm, a little bit of clarity here. Are we gonna have a facility in town?
No. This is, what we've kind of all joined is Baldwin County has taken the lead, our county.
Right, that's what I thought.
And they are building a mixed refuse facility at the Magnolia facility. And it will be, you know, we will be a member. Ultimately, the goal is, is that, you know, let's say, when we get up and running, and I will tell you, we're, Fairhope's one of the bigger players. I mean, we have probably a better participation rate in recycling than any other municipality in the county. So everything that we take to them is gonna be weighed when it goes through. And in a perfect world, let's say the market gets better, and it turns out that, you know, they broke even. Well, then that means our tipping fees, if there are any, are gonna be adjusted to zero based upon our participation. But on the good news is, let's say one, that they get, the market gets to the point where they make a little money. Well, if we brought them 20% of the product that they make money on, then we have a cooperative account that gets us a 20% commission of that back.
That's correct.
Because right now, we're tied to E C U A, which is a Florida account, a Florida operation, and they have no loyalty to us, and we really have no, no skin in the game. And we're, we're, we are paying them regardless of what the market's doing. So at least with this, it's, we're gonna be in a cooperative agreement, and, and, and I'd rather do business with ourselves than to be doing business with a third party.
No, 100%. This is something that we've been looking forward to. I just wanted to kind of give a little bit more detail, since we're talking about it. I asked about it last meeting. I kind of put something out there. We didn't talk about it then, but...
And the first instant savings that we'll see, right now, we, we have a 45-mile one-way trip to deliver recycled. We're gonna take that down to about 12 miles.
So that's my next question.
That is a big time and fuel savings right there.
So those are my next questions. Are we picking up, or are we having to travel an extensive distance like we were doing before? Because we were paying that company...
And having to, and having to... That's correct.
Use gas and travel 300 miles.
Still doing that right now.
I thought we was getting...
Yeah, and that's why we keep cheering Baldwin County, go ahead and get it finished, get it finished. We're ready for them to get open, so.
Right, 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 right. And one last question. These are questions that the citizens have been emailing me, so I'm just putting it out in the, in the ether. Mixed use. We do a mixed, we changed it from separating now to where we're all gathering.
Right now, everything is a mixed stream.
Yes, a mixed stream. Well, I think one of the questions that I got was, would that continue, or would we separate? And this might be something that we have to get in the future, answer-wise.
This is how I envision it. We're, we're, we're gonna have some challenges, because we're gonna have to do a very aggressive education campaign.
Yeah.
One of the things that the county is pretty committed against is glass. So we're gonna have to deal with glass separately. I think the, 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 the route to solving that problem, our citizens like to recycle, so we want to give them every opportunity to do that. I think glass will become a drop-off only, meaning that we'll have it, just, just like you come to, to the landfill, you, it'll be open Monday through Friday, plus a half day on Saturday. You bring your glass there, and we'll deal with that stream with a, with a third party to, to deal with that. Also, I think that there may be some limitations on the types of plastics. Right now, we pretty much take the whole gambit, one through seven. Think the county's gonna tighten it up a little bit. So we're gonna have to go out and educate what is recyclable going into the future and, and get everybody up. But it will be a mixed...
It's still a stay-one stream, right?
Now, I, I still think that with, with our pickup of our commercial accounts, we, you know, we've still been trying to segregate cardboard, because that's one of those commodities. And I think that will give us some upside with our local MRF, is because that is the product that converts to cash the fastest.
That's the cash, right. So, commercial only. Otherwise, we'll stay one string.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you, Richard.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Richard.
I hope that answered all the questions.
Paige?
I was just gonna give y'all a little heads up. Internally, we are doing some housekeeping in the conclusion of Mardi Gras madness that we have gone through for the past two weeks. We are going over our parade rules and regulations internally between the Police Department, Public Works, and myself. So we're gonna probably be bringing that to y'all next work session to kind of discuss the parade rules, regulations, and the parade permits that these organizations pull. We have pulled our previous from 1993, so it might be time for a little update. So.
Hey, nothing changes. It's Mardi Gras.
Just wanted to give y'all a little heads up about that. So that's it.
Thank you, Paige.
Thanks, Paige. Yeah, a little antiquated, but...
Cory? Conrad?
Everything's good electric, but then we're gonna speak about number 12.
Come on, Mr. Patterson.
BP.
So, number 12, right now, we got a licensed electrician position. I, I was hired here to do that. Now I'm in assistant position, but I'm still doing licensed electrician position too. So I talked to everybody. Instead of having an electrician, licensed electrician, I'm still gonna do the same thing, is to defund that and make a lead electrician position. So we'll have two lead guys. That opens up another helpful position. So.
Basically, it will create two firms, one to do internal projects, one to do external projects. So it gets more than an hour.
Yeah.
Well, right now, we got, we got a crew at Valina, founders. So when we're doing that, the bill will start taking, taking a hit. It's just, we can work more efficiency, efficient.
For arbitration purposes.
Get more bang for your buck, pretty much.
Council chair, if I may.
Please?
Ben, I was reading it, and I don't know if this is, the defunded position is a licensed electrician, just for clarification.
Yes.
The lead electrician would be licensed as well?
No.
Well, now...
I, I still hold the license. I'll still keep doing that part, setting the jobs up. And then the lead guys go out and actually do that. That'll take...
So you're over the lead guys. I got you. So that's why, my next question was trying to understand why it went from an 11 to an 8. And I was trying to make sure that no one's getting undercut.
For us laypeople, lead sounds like the primary.
That's exactly right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I just didn't want to make sure you guys, if you had a license, but then just change your title, that you weren't getting demoted as far as your grade.
Right.
That's all. I was looking out for you guys. Okay.
Move a guy up, opens up another position. There was, like she said, Mayor Sullivan said, we got two crews. So.
Once you get paid, man, that's all. It went from 11 to an 8, so I'm like, that makes sense.
Councilman Conyers, you got any questions?
No, I'm clear.
Everybody's not working much on city project.
Huh?
What's going on?
They're not working much? Oh, that's a punch.
Not taking the bait. Thank you.
I know, right? That's a punch. I'm gonna leave that one alone. Sorry, Conrad.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate it. Nah, we're good. Keep up the good work.
God bless y'all, man.
Eric?
No, sir.
Nothing? Hunter, do you not have anything on the agenda tonight?
Oh.
Good gracious.
See that?
Ah, yeah.
What I said, I told you, hey, he, he's not gonna give him opportunity to talk.
I do have good news. We're not gonna talk about anything, any negative. We, a lot of the cop plan stuff, there's been conversations about cities working with county on some proj, on projects, especially how we consider growth. Narrow focus, but certainly kind of parallels with N P O, which Mayor and Councilman Burrell are on. But we, we are meeting with the county tomorrow about bike routes and countywide, and kind of looking at that comprehensively, that we can all come up with a plan where that works. And as we start, continue to grow, make sure those are incorporated. And sometimes, well, the biggest hurdle is those jurisdictional lines. You know, it's one thing for us to do it, but then if the county's not on board, or Daphne, or, and vice versa, then, then you're not seeing that goal reach its actual fulfillment. So we will be meeting with them tomorrow and kind of, and appreciate them kind of taking the lead on this, since a lot of that funding might be able to go through them. So that's the only update I have.
Thank you, Hunter. Appreciate it.
That's beautiful. That's the way it should be. All right. Looking, looking down at the agenda then, it looks like number seven, which is the impact fees update. I think we can all discuss that in some regard. I don't know that we need anybody in particular, but if we have some questions, who would be able to answer this question?
Chris would be able to answer questions. Chris will answer, and also, um, you want?
Chris and I here.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know that, I mean, I mean, I think we all kind of understand how this, it works in particular. I mean, just might as well talk about it for a second now, and we can...
For public purposes.
Yeah, we can, we can ask Chris if, if, if we need. But I think, I mean, obviously, this is something that, that we're expected to do every couple of years, and we did it a couple of years ago. And obviously, to make sure we're collecting and distributing our impact fees the most appropriate and efficient way for what we're doing in the city. Is that right?
It's required by the ordinance.
To do them every so often. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. And I said this on the radio this morning, and just, you know, I didn't know this before I got on the council, and I, and I know that there are people out there that don't know that, don't know this, because when they, one of the questions that we get asked are, why don't you make builders or developers pay X amount in development, impact fees, and why don't we use that money to do X with it? And there's really only a certain amount you can charge, and there's only certain things you can do with it. And that's all prescribed by law that unfortunately, City of Pharaoh doesn't get to have any say-so over. All right. Number nine is the Jerry Pate Irrigation Pump System Control. This is a non-budgeted item, something that, that came up that needs taking care of.
Is Bobby?
They basically had a pump go out of the irrigation system. And if we go for a long stretch of time without that irrigation in place, without rain, then we're gonna have an issue. So...
And we've spent so much time getting it back in shape, we don't want to take that chance.
No, we do not want it to, you know, take a hit. So this is to replace that irrigation pump.
Yeah, and so I would, I would, I would ask and hope that we figure out some way to make that money work, if we can, somewhere else.
I have asked him to look at that to see where we can maybe borrow money from another line item to cover some of this maintenance. But yes, ultimately, we're gonna have to have it.
Yeah, yeah, either way. I mean, but for just purposes of, of kind of keeping the budget on track.
Yeah, we, yeah. And I, and I know in the spirit of Brother Burrell, I can hear him shouting as far as the out-of-budget stuff. So that's all Jay's saying.
Yeah, something breaks, though, I mean, and you gotta fix it.
But this is, I mean... That's exactly right.
If we weren't worried about that rain, it wouldn't be a drought.
Well, and again, because we've spent so much time and effort, I say effort, I haven't really done anything personally, other than say yay or nay.
The great doctor.
But those that have done the work have taken a lot of time to get it back on track and looking good. And we don't want it, we don't, we don't want to be responsible for it not looking that way.
I have, what, is this a panel, or we're actually recreating the pump, the whole system? That's the thing.
Um, it's the panel that controls the pumping system.
But we're actually doing the pump.
We are. We're gonna do it all, I believe.
Okay, because it kind of misread a little bit.
All right. All right. Believe it or not, guys, that's it. We'll take a break now. Come back and get started promptly at 6 o'clock.